Counsel, excuse me, Councilmember Stacy Green.
Present.
Councilmember Kim Green.
Here.
Councilmember Bob Hall.
Here.
Councilmember Ken Paffini.
Here.
And Mayor Susan Tabalero.
Thank you. Does anybody have any business from the floor? Do you have anything to say? And all the rest of them are with us. Okay, we will move to item number four. Council will consider Resolution 18-2020 to impose a .25 percent, a quarter of a penny transaction, and use tax to fund the maintenance of the cemeteries, portion cost of capital needs for rec, and general municipal purposes, including building emergency reserve fund, police-fire protection, street maintenance, Oh, see, I didn't say it. Oh, did I say it?
Yeah.
Okay. That's a sandy thing. It's not an S thing?
No. Remove the second page.
Okay.
Is that because it hasn't been approved yet? Onto the process to become a district?
Oh, no. Okay, you starting?
So tell us more.
Tell us more. Okay. So tonight, you have a resolution before you that asks, that would go before the county for the November election, simply stating if the city would impose a transaction and use tax of grocery receipts to assist in the maintenance of Wyneema and Lincoln Heights Cemeteries and to fund a portion of the cost of capital needs for the parks and recreation in Weed, and for the general purposes, including emergency reserve fund, police-fire protection, and street maintenance improvements. So that's, that's the actual resolution that you're, you're voting for tonight, so. And I've had conversations with most of you in regards to this over, you know, the different things. I met with the cemetery district last week to discuss that, and, and I believe Bob Winston, in order for this to go to the county, it has to receive a four-fifths, just, just a heads up, tonight it has to receive a four-fifths vote. So, so, and, and the way it's worded here, the capital needs for parks and recreation districts in Weed is fine. You won't have to recuse yourselves from that.
I will, anyway. If it only needs four fifths.
You don't have to, because it's, it's, the way it's worded is talking about capital needs for parks and rec. And now, just for transparency, next year in the budget process, when we're going through that, and if this money, if it's voted on, passed, and we start getting ready for '21, '22, you will have to recuse yourself from any votes regarding that, those particular things.
But we don't have to here?
No. Am I correct, Bob?
Yeah.
Yep. I wanted to make sure before we did it, so.
Okay.
You're, you're fine.
On both of them?
Tonight, yes.
Oh, okay.
I have a question on this.
Sure.
Are there any percentages going to those various agencies that you listed? Is that going to be decided later, or is that?
That, that will be. The question was, will there be percentages? That will be handled through the budget process like it is with the other quarterpenny. And you'll get requests from, from those different agencies, and it'll be up to the council to decide what the amount of that particular quarterpenny would go toward those agencies.
I'm asking, because I think the public might ask that. I, I don't know. I'm just thinking.
And the reason why it's on here in this, Councilmember Green, is simply because if, if it went to a vote with exact earmarked percentages, then it would take a supermajority of the vote, 66, 67 percent, basically, of, of the voters would have to approve that in order for that to, to take place. The way it's worded now, it gives the council flexibility during the budget process to allocate those funds to the different entities listed here below.
And what's the percentage that the voters have to pass it?
Fifty percent.
So it's just, just half and half?
Fifty percent.
Fifty plus, plus one.
When it comes to the vote?
Yes.
Okay. In, in November, on the general election?
Yes.
That's also the president and all that, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
I have Mayor Tabalero one question. So are we supposed to leave the word "district" in, or take it out?
Take it out. It, that was inadvertently left on the agenda, agenda page, but if you actually look at the actual resolution itself, it, it, it takes it out. It says, at the very top of that page, it says for capital needs for parks and recreation in Weed, so.
Second question for me is, if we remove Weed Recreation and Park, and we need, remove Wyneema Lincoln Heights Cemeteries, can we still pass this quarter percent sales tax without a two-thirds majority?
We don't need two-thirds.
You mean, if we?
Does it just need a simple majority?
Yeah, just, as it sits right now, it just needs a simple majority.
If we remove Wyneema Lincoln Heights Cemeteries and Weed Recreation and Parks, does it still need a simple majority?
Yes, either way.
Either way, it'll work.
Yes.
So if we had, if we pass this, and when we get a request from the cemeteries, or we get a request from Weed Park and Rec for capital improvements, we could entertain that by itself without including it in this resolution. Is that correct?
If, if you took it out?
In other words, if we took out Wyneema, and we took out Weed Rec and Park, and we passed this, and we were lucky enough to get it passed by the voters, and once we got funds coming in, and Wyneema wanted part of it, or the Weed Park and Rec wanted part of it, could they make a request to the general fund?
Yes.
And it wouldn't, we wouldn't have to include Weed Park and Rec and... In other words, in other words, what I'm thinking is, is do we really need to have this convoluted method, whereas it's still a simple request from Wyneema, or a simple request from Weed Park and Rec for funds for capital improvement, or for operations based upon data that we would receive from them?
That one's always live.
Oh, okay. Yes, the answer to your question is, this is for the general fund. You're not required to spend the money in the way we cited in the resolution or the title. You have complete discretion to spend this money any way you wish, but if you say it's for a specific purpose, for one thing, then it requires two-thirds vote. It becomes a special tax in that event. A general tax is a majority vote. A special tax is a two-thirds vote.
I understand that principle, but...
You could take all this language out and pass it as a general tax if you wish to.
Right. And if we did that, once it's passed, during, during our budget process, could Weed Rec and Park and Weed Wyneema Cemeteries come in and make a request for funds?
They can, anybody can make a request for funds. If it's for municipal purposes, you can, you can make that award, or that grant, or that expenditure.
Okay, so, meaning city services, would that be for Weed citizens, or for streets, police?
Any municipal function.
Would Wyneema would qualify?
Any legitimate, any legitimate municipal function is allowed. Cities often take care of their own parks.
I know, but we have a district which is a little bit...
Doesn't, doesn't exclude us from doing that, too, though. We can, we can have a park function as well.
Right, I get that.
Overlapped that.
But I'm just saying, I don't know why we need to put that specifically in. If this, if this is a tax that's going to go to the general fund, if that general fund is going to be dispersed by city council, and by request from whatever, whether it be fire, police, Public Works, Park and Rec, or Wyneema.
It's to answer.
Do we need to, do we need to convolute the?
You don't need to, no. It's, it's to cut off the question, to answer the question, where's this money going to be spent? This is to explain how it might be spent, but it's not, not binding, not legally binding.
Oh, so it's a suggestion on how it might be spent?
That's all it is, yeah.
Okay. So as we spend our quarter percent sales tax currently, we divvy it up.
Yeah.
Pretty close to thirds, but...
Yeah, I mean, it goes to the senior nutrition, and the ones that was, I think it was passed in 2015. It goes to the senior program, I believe it went to the, portion of it went to the library, and then municipal services, fire, police. Very similar language as what was done in '15, five years ago, so.
It's only a suggestion, or it's not legally binding at all. You can do anything you want with the money.
To me, leaving those in there is being honest with the citizens by saying...
For me, for me, I'm not really fond of spending sales tax for the cemetery, or for... This is my perspective, so that's fine.
Yeah, no.
But for the cemetery, or for Weed Park and Rec, because I believe those have the vehicle for their own taxation issue. So, it's, so it's really hard. I struggle, I've struggled with this since last meeting, on what to do with this, and it, and it's bothersome to me, but anyway.
I have a question. I have a question. You want to go first, Bob? I have a question after.
Yes. This, this all started, basically, because we kept looking at watching the cemetery people come and ask for money in TOT, and we were, it was decided that that really wasn't meant for TOT. We, we should do something else. But for years, I mean, before I got here, I've been here for almost 12 years, and before, I'm sorry, it's been going on for a long time, that they depended on that. And we were looking at the people that have done it, and have kept it, kept it up. They've, they did a tremendous job, but they're getting older, and trying to set something up for the cemetery in the future, so it's going to run itself, so we don't have to, every, every year, in other words, it, it would be having funds to run itself. And as far as the recreation department, my district, I mean, it, it is convoluted, but that's what we've left with, because it really should be. We should have a community center that the cities, the cities running the community center, basically. I mean, that's what happens in most, most places, you know, it's unified. You know, and what we, it's, I agree, Ken, it's convoluted, but I think that's the only way we have it. I have to, as far as the tax go, I, you've heard me before, but I'll say it again, and Tim used the, the numbers, 74 percent of the, through a study, showed that the, the 74 percent of the sales tax came from people passing through. Well, probably 10 years ago, it was, we were told that it was 85 percent. So I, I'd like to rather keep it at 80 percent. And if it's 80 percent, we're talking about for every $1 that we get, for, that we pay, the citizens pay for tax, we get five. And that's, you know, we're, we're in a different game here. Not a different game, but I mean, our situation is different. We are addicted to, to sales tax, and the, the things that are going to be services, some of the services that we've expanded, like our senior programs, and, and I think that, you know, we can still do a lot with that, that money, but basically, Ken, what we have with the, with the seniors, and we have with the library, it's just basically a gentleman's agreement, or ladies' agreement. You know, yes, that's what we, that's what we decided we were going to use that money for, and it's kind of like, hopefully, we can maintain the, the council through the years that understand that, yeah, let, you know, we, we're all in this together, and we can't just take that money back, because, I mean, that, that's what it was earmarked for. And, and, let's face it, when you start talking about the cemetery, it's, it's not that hard of a sell. It's really not. I mean, you're talking about something that's substantial, you know, that we got to have, and we, and there's a lot of pride that goes along with the cemetery. It really is. It's, you know, you start passing through it, and, you know, you...
Especially if you remember what it used to look like.
Yes, yes, and it can turn into that real quick. I mean, and we, we were in a, you know, Weed right now is in a time where, you know, there has been growth. We've, we've improved a lot of things. We had a fire, we, but we've done things that, that, in doing things that are going to, we're going to need some services, you know. We're going to have to, we, you know, but you talk about the budget. Next year, when we look at the budget, I think we're going to look at it differently than we looked at it this year. You know?
Yeah.
So I'm in, as far as the tax go, I don't think that I, I, what I understand is if the, we just go parcel tax per parcel, there's not, that's not enough money to, to support the, the cemetery. But, and I also think it's just a bad sell. I don't think you're going to, I don't think you're going to get it. Yeah, I mean, my concern is, let's get something that we, that susten, you know, so we can look at the cemetery, and people can start planning 10 years from now. You know, rather, I mean, there's great people doing this. I mean, the people that did, do, take care of it, they love it. That's why they do it, you know. So I'm in favor of the quarter percent, and, you know, I really think we should be going for half a cent, but that's...
Baby steps.
That's me.
Yes, yes, my question was, Paffini had me thinking. We're thinking the whole process now, because my thought initially that we came to this because of what the TOT dollars have been for almost eight years, and I've seen the people come, chamber ones, come for funds to fund their organization, and I totally have questions about that. We all know that. And so, so I think I understand what he's saying, and I'm thinking now, I guess, this made me think, if these funds are going for, if they're, we're putting to the vote to go for a simple way, is how we're wording it, and that's how the question came up. If we do it differently, that shouldn't that be said, so we, so people know what they're voting on? I mean, if, if we are putting this total percentage towards those entities, I think that's a disservice, right? It's, if I'm understanding the question and discussion right.
But if you read, it's, it also talks about Councilmember Green, that funds will also go in toward helping build an emergency fund reserve for the city, as well as going toward fire, police protection, and for street maintenance and improvement. So it's, it's kind of got a bevy of other things, too, just besides...
Which supports my question of the diversity. Where's the money going? Is it all going to, well, 70 percent go to someplace, and 25?
That's up to the council. That's totally...
Just made me thinking by him saying that. The way it's worded, it is, it is, it does cause an opening for people, if they read it clearly, to see that other entities are going to be involved with this quarter percent tax.
Sure.
Where, where I was thinking that was going towards the Wyman Cemeteries, and what was the other third thing?
Rec and the city.
Yeah. And, and I understand the, the discussion about the Weed Rec Board, about their funding and how this can help, but, I mean, we're, we're a city, so I, I see how all money that comes in should help all organizations, but that's a magic wand approach.
So, can I respond?
Yeah.
So, back in 2015, the wording was, the quarter percent sales tax will go to...
Libraries.
Senior services, the library, and then municipal services.
Same wording, got you.
So, it's already happening, and every year, we get to decide how much of that goes to the library, how much of it goes to senior services. So I, I don't see that it's any more convoluted or not than it was five years ago. I, I don't see this as convoluted. I, I see it as, look at how many things we're going to be able to do with it.
When we get the money coming in.
Yeah. And, and the beauty of it is, we can fund all these things, and chances are, it's not going to change the finances of any one person that lives in this community. They're not going to feel it, because 75 percent of that money comes off the freeway from people who don't live here.
I will have to graciously disagree. Sales tax is a regressive tax, which means that the poorest people pay the most amount. So for those who can travel out of town to avoid a tax, for those who can shop other places to avoid a tax, it's wonderful. But for those who are stuck in town, it's not so wonderful. And although, although it may not be a great deal of money, I've been in business a long time, and I will tell you that sometimes when we say $5 a month, I mean, the look on people's faces in this community for $5 is kind of distressing. $9.
Which is, which is my argument against a parcel tax.
Well, I don't believe in any of the taxes. To tell you the truth, I believe in raising the money and getting those funded, so we won't go there. But I'm just saying that sales tax is a regressive tax, so.
So, so the one thing that I found during this, and like you said, people who can travel, I, I go to Puerto Rico all the time. I've been shopping at Rayleigh's, or Walmart, or wherever, if I'm up there, for how many years. I never realized I was paying $7.75 up there. And in Dunsmere. So I don't know that I, I don't know that they notice it. I mean, I know a lot of people go, oh, I'm going to go to Oregon, so I don't have to pay the taxes. Well, yeah, that's great. But now you want to know why the state of California keeps raising their taxes, because you're not helping us when you go to Oregon and buy something.
Can I ask one more question, ma'am? I understand. I don't want to cut you off with that, but if this manages to pass, will Weed Rec and Park take Wyneema under its wing?
Wyneema doesn't want, isn't giving themselves up. I mean, we already do their financials. We do their payroll. We do their payroll taxes. We do that. We will, we plan to work together, so maybe we do our schedules together, and we have another mower, and our rec guys go over there and mow, and the guys that they have that volunteer and get paid do something, and, but...
So for the last 20 years, what you're telling me, as, as, as Wyneema has gone, and then gone up, and got improved by a lot of hard work from people, now that we were looking at a funding vehicle, they wanted to give it up, because they didn't have any money.
That was not true.
Oh, they didn't want to give it up?
Mm-mm.
They just wanted our money. And there again, I would also...
No, 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 no. They, they come and ask...
When they come to TOT money and ask for $15,000, and I know it wasn't funding everything, and I don't see any fundraising or anything else going on with, with that organization as far as developing funds, I call it coming, coming to the public trough, and, and so that's all I can say with it. And it's not to be derogatory to the cemeteries, although when they're broke, they welcome us, but when we're not, it's kind of hands-off. I, I don't get it, so that's okay.
Well, I think one thing that we have to remember with the cemetery is that this was not their idea. This was our idea, to help them, to get them off of our TOT. And so now we're convincing them to join us, so that they have funding, so that our TOT funding can go to other people. And that was one of the questions I asked them. It says in, I have paperwork that says that they, they are not a special district, which that was, what was, we were told. They are a, a local nonprofit, and that they plan, let's see. This, that they want to give the city the deed to their property, that they wanted to rescind their board. Why am I not finding this? And have us take it over, and they went, no, that's not true. We never said that.
Well, I believe that people that owned the gift store, what was her name?
Lanay. Lanay.
Lanay. I thought that was a statement that they made in a letter to the board when they did TOT.
Yeah, that she was at this meeting when I asked, and they all went, no, we never said that.
I got mixed signals, then, but that's okay.
I think some of, a lot of us did on that.
Yeah, I think we all got some misinformation.
And my theory into it is that Weed Recreation owns two commercial lawn mowers, and what do you need to do at a cemetery? Mow the lawn. And so if we can stop, we can get them off TOT, and we can get help to the rec district, then that can get done. It can get on, you know, there, that lawn mowing can get on to the lawn mowing schedule, but there could be things like, our lawnmower breaks, not paying the person driving it, but that the lawnmower breaks, well, there's however many thousands of dollars that is. Right now, we don't need a new lawnmower.
But we do need a swimming pool repair.
Right, we need a swimming pool repair.
It's well over us ever having enough money to do.
Yeah. The swimming pool is beyond, and, and we apply for grants. Back, we're on one right now that they, you know, you know, the state, they keep telling us that, we'll send you the money.
Oh, I got a letter today.
Oh, good, on that?
They've rescheduled again, yes.
So, so that's, the swimming pool is part of it? The swimming pool's a huge part of it?
And our pool is one, there's four pools in Siskiyou County, four public pools. Two of them will be open this summer. Ours opened last week, the other one, I think, opened this week. If not, it's next week. We were at capacity today, and we had to ask parents to go sit outside the fence, so that we could let more kids inside the fence, because we can only go half-capacity. So there were kids waiting in line to go in, waiting for people to leave, so that they could go swimming. And then there's night swim tonight, so we said...
And they played softball over, all over the weekend, too. For me, that has very little to do with, I, I understand that we do need pool repairs. That's been well expressed, but I'm just questioning the vehicle on how we get that done. If we do a quarter percent sales tax, even with the size of repairs that are involved, we're talking very long ways to get there. If it's a half a million dollars to fix it...
It's not.
Okay, well...
No.
But right now...
Whatever the pricing comes out to be, it, it, we're, we're looking at ways to fund this. This is going to amount to about $260,000 a year, if the calculations kind of stay true to, we're not going to see any of the money until July, or fairly close to July, because we, and it costs us, how much to put on the ballot?
$4,000, is it?
$4,000 to put on the ballot. It costs us money to put it in place, in place, so again, I don't know. And possibly by then, Love's will be up and running, and did we accomplish anything? I mean, if, if Love's increases our tax base...
Better for us?
Oh, I understand that, but...
The, the rec department, the way I'm looking at it is, yeah, we may only get $125,000 out of the whole thing. But if the repairs are $250,000, then I have matched that I can apply for a grant. Right now, I have nothing. So I could, it, it's really hard to find a grant that's 100 percent financed.
Ms. Mayor, I'm just a question. So I'm trying to put this together, listen to everybody. So I'm, I think I'm hearing us five say that, yes, we agree with the percentage increase, number one. Now, where that's going is the question that we have different mindsets about, and certain community members may have questions. Is that a clear thinking?
Well, we don't have to work that out tonight.
Right, yeah, that's, because in reality, which it just occurred to me on the one that was passed in 14 or 15, whenever that was.
2015.
We don't have to give the library money every single year. I mean, I, because we said we would, I think we should, but...
And we have.
And we have, yeah.
As the city attorney said, no, it, because it's just, it's a general fund sales tax.
So in reality, this could be the same thing. So in reality, this could be the same thing. This could be...
Ms. Mayor?
Does rec need anything? You know, it's one certain year? No, not really. Then skip a year.
Poop the money somewhere else.
In the roads.
Ms. Mayor, we were talking about, you know, when it first came about, you know, it was a gentleman's agreement, more or less. But at that time, we knew that trying to go the other way, because we just watched Mount Shasta do a quarter percent for their library, they had to go two-thirds.
Because it was just libraries.
Yeah, and they went two-thirds, and it was just library. They couldn't use the money for anything else. And that was our motive for going this way. It is, you used the word convoluted, I kind of think it is, it's switching in a way, but it's in a, I think there's some order to it, and I think that, you know, the reasons why we're doing this are, I think it's all in a benevolent form, you know. And like I said before, and I was one of the people that said that we have to do something, we should get involved, like Kim said, we started this. It wasn't the cemetery. We started this trying to help, and I respect...
I would agree, but...
I respect Ken's opinion on this. I think he, you know, from his perspective, what he's talking about is real. But I think we're kind of in the position we are right now, and I don't see us being, that it's so critical that we're really messing up if we do this.
I just have a problem with the fact that we're becoming a taxation entity for things that are not in our overall control. I mean, we're in control of public works, we're in control of police and fire, the seniors, we bought the bus that's been turned over to the, I think the city still owns it, but the rec operates it with their operators, drivers.
You don't want it. So if this doesn't go through, we're giving it back.
Oh.
There's warning.
Wow, interesting.
Interesting. Okay.
It's convoluted.
That is interesting, wow.
Okay, employee-wise, how did we do on the PPP? Was there any money received from PPP?
You can't give them.
Why not?
Well, the city...
We're a special district.
Oh, okay.
The city's going to receive some back, right? For the van.
The OES stuff.
Because the van's been driving.
For the OES reimbursement, but not the PPP stuff. No cities or counties have received, or districts have received it.
They keep saying they're coming up.
It's sitting in DC.
Cities haven't done that either very well with that, okay?
No, we haven't received anything from that, because it hasn't come down from DC to, some of the cities in California, the ones over five-hundred thousand in population have received some funding, but it's, and some of the smaller, yeah, so some of the smaller cities have gotten some money, but not much.
So I don't know if you realize that, like, the rec department, everything we do goes through the county treasurer's office. So the PPP program, if you even did qualify, you had to have a relationship with a bank that was an approved PPP bank to loan you. Well, we don't have any of our own bank accounts, so we couldn't have gotten any anyway, because it all goes through the county treasurer, because we don't have enough money to fund our own bonded treasurer. So the county treasurer's office is our treasurer.
Controls all special districts.
Controls all of our stuff.
All the special districts? Emily?
It varies.
Yeah.
Depending on the size of the district.
Okay.
So we don't even have a bank account. We don't even get to write a check. If I need deposit slips, I have to get them from the county.
If anybody can take us out in the weeds on this, I can. I'm just wondering how the hell this ever happened. I mean, this doesn't make sense, that you have a district in the city, and somebody had to have a motive when they designed this. And I don't think it was the citizens of weed.
No, okay, special districts.
How did that happen? Tim, do you know how those things, or what's the motive for the things like that?
I think that's a project for one of those senior projects.
Get in the weeds.
Ten years ago, the Weed Recreation and Parks District celebrated their fiftieth anniversary. Yeah, ten, twelve years ago, back when you were there with us. Yeah, it's been, so it's been its own district for...
Long time.
Long time.
So the California Special Districts Association, we have like a forum, and every day we get, you know, tons of emails, people asking questions and answering the questions, and the special districts are pretty much rec districts, water districts, and cemeteries in the state. So that, I think, is what led me to believe that our cemetery was a special district, but they're not.
I just thought it's something to create that pool originally, maybe that, it was designed, the money, excuse me, the money could be through a special district, you could get the money to build that pool or something.
Oh, maybe, yeah.
So no, the Lions, Lions had something to do with it.
It says it on the low.
It doesn't mean, thank you, I was just trying to figure out, you know, because to me, it doesn't make sense, the same thing as we got Roseburg out of the city limits. Yeah, I mean, the same...
Yeah. But I think having special districts and having the association helps in lobbying state funds, because we do get, if you're a special district, you do get some tax revenue. The reason that the cemetery employees are paid through us is because of workers' comp, same thing with the city. But it is affecting us, because if you have so many employees, your minimum wage is this. If you have one more employee, your minimum wage is this. If you have three more, your minimum, so we had to actually cut down on the number of lifeguards we wanted to hire, because it would have put us in a different bracket, because we have six people on our payroll that don't work for us.
Three people at the cemetery and three drivers.
It is pretty complicated. Something's god darn simple.
But it's not personal, God.
It's not personal, no. I'm not personal about any of this, I'm just, I still firmly believe that it's not where it should be coming from. But I can see everybody's point of view, I don't have an issue with that at all, I just...
Okay, I think my question for you then is, if tonight we pass this resolution, and it pass our, we start promoting this to our voters, are you going to promote it? Are you gonna, or not?
First of all, I don't think you're supposed to promote a taxation issue, but...
Well, when people ask questions, are we explaining? The cemetery...
I would probably explain it fairly, but, you know, as far as, I am still not a hundred percent sold on this. I, you know, if you guys want to pass this, that's fine. I mean, that's just, I just, for me, it is, yeah, it is principle, and it's really hard for me to really say, I thought we had organized a way for Lincoln and Weed to kind of, for the park and rec to kind of marry up together, and all of a sudden, that's not a happening thing, and I don't know how that ever took place, and at this point, it's mute, but...
We weren't going to marry them unless we got this.
Yeah, funding, I get that part, yeah.
Hey, if we did marry, if you got two broke people, that doesn't make you any richer.
I can see that now.
If it runs together, you're making it a city richer.
I think from what I remember...
You're moving to West Virginia now.
Our previous city manager, Ron Stock, brought up the idea, there were some, and I can't get the wording right, but he brought up the idea that there was something that we could do through the courts, through the system, that would gain us money.
If it's not omnibus, it's a bill.
Right, so that's how this started.
But the omnibus bill is pending, that's what they're saying. One of the conditions of that omnibus bill is the funding mechanism.
Well, the omnibus bill got passed.
Right. But one of your conditions is that you have a source of money.
Yeah.
You can't just take it on because you didn't have money to take it on unless you passed.
Unless we come and ask for TOT money.
And the omnibus bill, really, the way I read it, and the way it was explained to me, was passed so that a special district could do administration or take on another special district? But we don't need to hear that, because they're not a special district.
Nobody caught that one, huh?
Mm-mm.
It says it, right?
Because there's lots of, there's a lot of special district cemeteries in this county.
That's what we started, I thought that's what was going to happen. That's what you referred to, I think. That's what was going to happen. Was there some reason in that process that, why it was changed?
So primarily here, we're using Weed Park and Rec and the cemetery district to pass a sales tax issue. That's bottom line, for the public to hear, right?
Part of it.
Well, it's not a sales tax issue.
No, the city's not using them, they're using the city.
Either way, half a dozen one, half a dozen the other.
Because we couldn't do this. We could only do a parcel tax, and then the parcel tax would have to be fifty dollars a parcel a month.
And you wouldn't get that.
And it would have to pass at three-quarter percent that we would never get.
Yeah.
For us to actually do any, because we got the roll, we go into the tax assessor's office, he advised against that, he said the percentage you would need to be able to do anything with... Is probably as high as what the county gets. And so his advice was, is the way we're going. The consultant that we spoke to, that was, that's how they advised us.
Because we did research what you talked about last week.
We did. I went and talked to Craig.
K.
Craig K.
At the assessor's office.
And if you look at our roll, there's an Excel spreadsheet, I can send it to you if you want to see it. There's like two thousand forty-six something parcels in the rec district community, and about a third of them are US Forest Service and city and state parcels, who don't pay us anything.
So I'm with Bob. Did we miss our initial project, bullseye, by what we did? Because now, you're right, thanks for reading that. I know it was when Ron Stock mentioned that, it was the Omnibus Act. So did we do something incorrectly to follow through, or just, didn't roll out the way?
I think we missed the target. We didn't put the right...
Didn't need to be done.
I would think it needed to be done.
Hmm, okay.
And I don't think anybody realized that.
I think we might have just overthought the process, maybe.
Okay.
Mayor, to clarify, the resolution requires only a majority vote, the ordinance requires the two-thirds.
The ordinance requires four out of five, the resolution.
We're just, yeah, two-thirds. Resolution, just majority.
Okay.
And what are we doing first, the resolution?
Resolution, yes.
Oh, gosh.
You going?
No, I'm still thinking, I'm still thinking this. When we explain it like we do, I hate that we missed the target, because I was hoping for that, and I'm sorry that we didn't catch that.
Well, but it doesn't matter. It doesn't make any difference.
It was a lot of work for nothing.
Yeah.
We didn't need it. We thought we did, but we didn't.
It did, it very well could have helped, at some point, might help another community that looks to do this.
Well, it said it doesn't matter, doesn't matter to me, because if we did work and didn't entertain something, then we should have learned something. So it does matter what we've just went through. There is a lesson to learn, everything that you do.
Yeah, but there was no financial anything involved in any of it. It didn't help us or hurt us financially. For them to say that, yes, a special district can take over another special district, it helps everybody else in the state, but we didn't need it, because they're not a special district.
So in fact, all we have done, if we do this, we're creating a funding mechanism for Wyneema. We're helping our city...
Parks.
Parks, because we have a big issue coming up.
We're helping our police and fire.
And we're helping police and fire.
And we're helping our roads. And I'm going to point at Bob, I'm going to point at Craig and Bob, we're helping our roads.
We might get it up.
On that note, I want to make one, talk about the roads. You know, as far as team concept, what Ken's talking about is, I see it as a team, he's on the city team, and that's his personality, that's why I love him. But, you know, because what I wanted, what I should be saying, I feel like I should be saying, is that quarter of a cent should be going in the roads.
That's why you want the fifty?
Yes, that's why I say go to half. But I do, my point is, is that, but we started this thing a long time ago, like Kim says, and I just, I think, following through on this one, and we got to get serious about these roads. We've got to get serious about these roads. I mean, we've got a project coming that's going to help my neighborhood out, the people are going to be off my back, but there's still, if we don't get some funding for Craig and his crews, they will, gravel will be coming down.
Well, and again, with the rec department, I very well see that there could be a year that the rec department comes in and goes, we're good. We don't need any capital improvements this year, we're good, put it someplace else. I'm not, and it literally just occurred to me this afternoon, I don't see that happening with the library. I've not seen that happen with the library. The library goes, we're good, we don't need any money this year. That has not ever happened.
They haven't received actually what we kind of show on the books, if Emily can probably vouch for that, I think, a little bit, but anyway.
Anyway.
Sidetrack.
Senior, we bought the van, we've been doing some senior stuff that hasn't been happening, so...
Can we help some roads?
I'm thinking, the whole entire thing, the whole point five-oh, if this passes, needs to be refunked.
When you say the amount, Ms. Mayor, Mr. our city manager, two-hundred-and-sixty-thousand, that puts earplugs in me, but great to listen for more, because when I find out, like I did this week, as far as the Lincoln Heights roads, it's just going to be Lincoln Avenue, highway to highway. It's not going to be Cressmar Avenue, Tenth Street, not Alameda Street, not all those bad streets. So I'm like, wow, we still have bad streets after thirty, forty years, and that's not to get fixed. So yours might be fixed, but mine aren't, mine's just going to be Lincoln Avenue. I'm like, wow!
But I think that the city can use it as bargaining, just like I said with the rec department, that you may be able to use it as matching money, so you're going to get, yeah, you'll get twice as much, you know, rather than going, well, the project's two-hundred thousand, and we only have a hundred, all right, let's go look for another hundred.
Well, from the initial tax provision, I tell you what people have told me, and I'm on the, and you know, when I saw the nine dollars on my bill for the water piece, I cried and screamed, but I know I had to do it. So when people say, Stacy, we don't want no more taxes, and that's throughout the community, so I'm saying, that's a max, the questions of where this percentage is going, are they going to see, are they going to agree with it and then vote for it, because they're going to see an interest in something that they want? That's initially the bottom line, regardless of what we say on it, that's why I asked the wording, how clear is that? Because that's the question I'm going to get, I know. Okay, you have this thing that you're voting on for the city, where's that going to go for my purpose, whatever that purpose is? And we have to be able to answer that some type of way. And I believe we can by how we're explaining it, because you read the extra that's going to the general fund, and, yeah.
And we actually brought that up to the cemetery people, and they were like, yeah, we'll be promoting this as...
But they know they're getting some operating funds to help them, period, because it's listed as, what he's saying, is listed there, so we know funds are going to them to assist them, it's not going to fully support them, but it's going to assist them, right?
But they're going to be talking to their friends, and their friends, and their neighbors, and, but I have a question for you, okay? You are like, probably the best person in the room to tell us, you're right off the freeway, the customers that you see on a daily basis, are they, are the majority of them from off the freeway?
Oh, out of town, Mark has done studies, there's major dollar amounts that we're missing by the traffic that's on I-5 right there. We can get so much, so, yes, I agree with the sales tax, because that's how we can get it, it's not coming for our funds, unless the people spend something in our town, but most of it will come from visitors. And I kind of agree with that, it's kind of mean, but I kind of agree with that. So yes, there's, he's done the research, there's millions of dollars that we can capture that we aren't getting as a city.
Well, and we did that with that small business that you found out.
Yes, it's a good thing I just, you had the taxing going.
We've got two minutes.
Just finish up on this, and the last thing I want to say is, you know, we've used this money... And the last thing I want to say is, you know, we've used this money for a lot of different things. Even, I think we actually did some roadwork with some of that money, didn't...
Fire truck?
The fire truck.
Fire truck.
There was 75,000 set aside for roadwork, but the money wasn't there. Numbers were there.
So the money from the sales tax, we were going to take that, but we didn't. Is that what you're... Okay, I didn't know that.
Okay, in that, in that part of the...
Why wasn't it there?
We took it from somewhere else.
Yeah.
Took it from somewhere else.
It went someplace else.
Took it from some, we got the money from somewhere else. I think it was a CBG.
So it sounds as though we're ready to vote.
Okay, so do you want me to do this?
Sure.
All right. I move that the reading in full of the body of Resolution Number 18-2020 be waived. Set resolution being introduced and adopted by title only.
Second.
That was you, Bob?
Yes.
Okay. It's been moved...
I have to do... Oh, yeah, no.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution. All in favor?
By title only.
By title only.
By title only. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Any opposed?
Oh, that's a hard one.
All right. I move adoption of Resolution Number 18-2020, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Weed submitting to the voters a question on whether to impose a 0.25% transaction and use tax to fund the maintenance of Wayneema and Lincoln Heights cemeteries, to fund a portion of the cost of capital needs for parks and recreation in Weed, and for general municipal purposes, including building emergency reserve fund, police, fire protection, and street maintenance and improvements.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. Got that's any? Okay. Thank you. B, council will consider first reading and introduction of ordinance number 461-2020, increasing the city transaction use tax. Do we need to have much discussion on that?
What are the numbers? What are we increasing it to? So it's just on this record of this meeting? We're increasing it, right?
To 7.5?
Yeah, it's going from 7.5 to, if it passes, it'll go to 7.75.
Okay, I'm just, it's not noted in there, the number?
The base for the state is 7.25, and it's saying that we're going to go from a 0.25% to a .50, which would be the 7.75.
Can we add that verbiage, just so it's clear?
Do we have to?
I don't, do what you want. I'm not going to make a big thing about it.
We don't control that seven and a quarter. That's the state's business.
No, no, that's why, he was asking what the total would be if this passes.
7.5.
We can put that in the...
Yes, I just want you to have that.
We're raising the quarter percent to a half a cent, and that's the resolution.
We can put that in the impartial analysis, if you want, when it comes to the ballot.
Oh, okay, yeah.
I just think it's good to see numbers when people ask for something, it's in the verbiage.
You will put that in the impartial analysis.
Okay, that'd be great.
I have one question, it's a little off-topic, just a tad. We're instituting another quarter percent, and that stays on there like forever. How do we get it off?
Mr. Winston?
Make a resolution, or can we...
Another ordinance to repeal this would be occurred.
Thank you.
Let me get two more votes.
Okay.
It's a half a million now. Love comes in.
So after our meeting with the cemetery the other day, they spoke, and they don't want to be first in the verbiage. So I don't know if that changes anything.
Yeah. Yeah, just don't tell...
When they put it on the ballot, does it have to be the same exact verbiage as right here? I don't know why they...
You can always just tell them no when they ask for money.
I don't know why they, I don't know why they said that, but...